Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Someone decided to speak, Captain, Mr. Mble.
I certainly have not.
All right. So then we'll move to our presentations. And first, we have Brent Sturm and Dana Snyder. We're going to talk about Jobs for West Virginia Graduates. I think we have a handout already. Trying to get ahead of things. That's a good idea. We appreciate that.
I like that shirt.
Do you like that?
Yeah, yeah.
I wore Mr. Midkiff. I can talk three or four hours anytime I'm called on. And he said, "Get that stuff out first." He's the recording secretary.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
We'll go ahead.
Thank you, President Priestley, members of the board, Superintendent Midkiff, and guests. My name is Brent Sturm. I'm the executive director of Jobs for West Virginia's Graduates. And I'm here this evening to invite you to join in our work of changing the future of West Virginia. We intend to do that one mortarboard at a time. Jobs for West Virginia's Graduates is our affiliate of Jobs for America's Graduates, the largest and most successful high school dropout prevention and school-to-work transition program in the nation. JAG began in Delaware in 1980, and now we're in 35 states and territories. Let's take three minutes of your time, if I may, to review a video that'll introduce you to Jobs for America's Graduates, because three minutes is less time than I would speak if I were you.
If you'll hit that play button at the bottom.
Dragged it's shown over 30 years. What it is, what it's about is how to put young people to work so that they get on a path where they can be successful in life. Our mission really is to make it possible for young people who probably do not have the skills to meet the really demanding circumstances that most employers have today and meet them on day one when they go to the job. The evidence we have is that a relatively modest intervention like JAG can make all the difference. And the good news, if you do this right, it's only one intervention. You know, I have a testimony that I share. You know, I was a victim of domestic violence. School was secondary to me, but having the foundation and the support that I had for my job specialist was instrumental. And I just don't think that I would be standing here today saying that I have a master's degree and working on a master's degree, too, and actually being, you know, a product of starting a statewide nonprofit, jobs for PIS or RIS graduates for the first time. The JAG results are absolutely impressive, and the overall economy numbers don't lie. Economically, JAG makes money for our country.
You want a program that has data to back up success and its efficiency and low cost per student to deliver. And it's got to be JAG every time. Even if you look at the amount of money per student JAG takes to implement a program, the data is showing all of those funds are recouped by the state economy in 14 months because they're working and they're paying taxes on up there.
This program has been phenomenal in Mississippi. The success rate is out of this world. More than 90% of the kids who are involved in Jobs for Mississippi Graduates graduate from high school on time. So you're talking about a success rate that is 50% higher than for the average student. And this is taking kids into the end of the Jobs for Mississippi Graduate program who are at risk. Kids. That's why we're so proud of it. They did such a great job, great results.
Because we can work with these kids on the front end or the back end. If we invest on the front end, make sure that they have the tools to succeed, the supportive environment, then on the back end, we're not going to be dealing with the criminal justice system. You know, as an employer, when we look for the right person to join our company, we look for someone who has the enthusiasm about work, being there on time, having passion about the quality of the work that they do. That's what JAG really instills. I would tell you that of all of the things that we do as a company, we are most proud of the efforts that we put forth to help every single kid within the JAG program. America faces a really tough budget situation, a very difficult economy, very difficult choices. The question now is how do you take the evidence of what we've been demonstrating and help schools look at bringing this kind of approach to a much larger scale for many of the young people in school? And with that kind of help in hand, we can help a whole generation of young Americans be contributors to the economy, be able to raise their families in reasonable economic circumstances, and be a contributor to society. They're ready to do it. We just need to give them a chance.
JWVG came to West Virginia. JAG started in Delaware in 1980. We came to West Virginia in 1997 under the leadership of then-Governor Cecil Underwood. Since then, we've served as many as 22 schools and as few as two. This year, we're already underway in nine schools in four counties. I'm here to invite you to join Randolph County in expanding our reach to 11 schools in six West Virginia counties. Jobs for West Virginia's Graduates is an elective class taught for credit in the high school, taught by a specially-trained job specialist. The curriculum focuses on career development, job attainment, job survival, leadership, self-development, and personal skills. We enroll only those students who need the program, who want the program, and who are able to benefit from the program. There's a huge body of research and a statistical model that we use to recruit the right students, the students that are most at risk in a high school. But let me just make it easy. We're looking for the 35 to 45 students at Lincoln County High School most at risk of not graduating or not making a successful transition to the workforce or post-secondary education. It's a targeted intervention. We're spending money and energy only on students that need it the most. We're working to prepare students to enter the workforce, but at the same time, we're increasing the graduation rate. It's a research-based, performance-driven intervention. We've served 1.1 million young people over almost four decades, so we know what works. And we hold our staff accountable, not only to be sure they do what works, but to be sure they get not the goals that we strive for, but the standards we insist on. Those standards are a 90% graduation rate, a 60% job placement rate within 12 months of high school graduation, an 80% what we call positive outcome rate, either working or in post-secondary education within a year. Of those who are employed, 60% employed full-time. Of those who are employed, 80% placed full-time. They might be going to school part-time and working part-time to make a full-time commitment. Those are lofty standards. Actually, to put it in perspective, that's twice the rate that the general population finds work within 12 months of high school nationwide. That's three times the rate that they find full-time work within 12 months. The general population rate, graduation rate in Lincoln County for the class of 2016 was 87.4%, just under the state rate of 89.8. Your class of 17 rate's not on the Department of Events website. But we're starting with the kids who are at most at risk, the ones that are probably not going to be a part of that 89%. And we expect our staff to get 90% of them across the stage to shake Mr. Midkiff's hand. We work in the school with ninth through 12th graders, focusing primarily on juniors and seniors because they're closest to the workforce. We provide seniors with 12 months of follow-up services after graduation, job placement assistance, help navigating the higher education system, financial aid. What's a registrar or a bursar? You ever think about the fact that those are words that only families that are, that have been in education and are educated? No. Those are not words normal people use, just educator words. Since we keep them for 12 months after graduation, we just finished with the class of 2016 a few months ago. Let me tell you about our class of 2016. Kids that we enrolled, 37% were in single-parent homes. 43% of their mothers and 46% of their fathers did not hold a high school diploma. 40% of their parents were unemployed. 21% were a year behind in school, and 20% were two years behind. By the way, there was only one student making that difference that was only one year behind. 69% had a history of behavior problems. 43% had below-average grades. 94% had a record of excessive absences. I suggest to you that that's the source of all those other problematic statistics. Three of them were addicts. Two of them were already felons when we got them, and one was the child of an incarcerated That's not a lot of hope for urban teenagers. Let me tell you what they did. By May 31, 2017, 97.89% were high school graduates. 64.5% were employed, 71.6% of those full-time. 82.8% were employed or in post-secondary education. 81.67% were connected full-time to work, to school, or a combination of the two. And that's not just a fluke in statistics. I've now been active with the program through 10 graduating classes, from the class of 2007 to the class of 2016. Most of those years, by the way, as a volunteer because I believe in the program. Over those 10 years, if you look at all of our students, we've had a graduation rate of 95.6%, job placement 67.79%, positive outcome 84.9%, full-time jobs 63.6%, full-time placement 80.35%. Now, I know what you're thinking. This guy is here to ask us for a small fortune. It has got to cost a ton of money to get our kids into this program. Well, I'm also well aware that it could be said in any public school system in the state of West Virginia tonight, a dollar is a small fortune. But I'm not just coming to you with an invitation. I'm coming to you with some money in my pocket to help you say yes. The total cost of a program at Lincoln County High School will be $60,000 a year, $1,500 a student to take a student from a probable high school dropout to a high school graduate. Research shows, as you heard on the video, that a student repays that cost to the economy within 14 months of graduation in the form of increased payroll tax. A high school graduate makes about $400,000 more over their lifetime than a high school dropout. After those 14 months of repaying the cost of the program, it's all economic growth, building the economy of Lincoln County and West Virginia. The savings aren't even built into that. The savings to society of a potential high school dropout graduating from high school are staggering. Dropouts are 63 times more likely to encounter the criminal justice system than graduates. I don't know if you do criminal law at all. Well, good, because the way to get more clients for a criminal lawyer is don't let them graduate. Build your dropout program. Graduates are less likely to parent early. They're less likely to abuse alcohol and other drugs. They're less likely for their entire lifespan to be dependent on social welfare programs. So at $60,000, it's a deal. But let me make it better than that. I consider it my job to raise 67% of the cost for every school we serve. I'm always going to have my goal of raising $40,000. I do ask that the local counties put in the other third, $20,000. But this year, I'll help you do that, too. Actually, most years, I can help most counties with some of them. I've never been able to eliminate it. I can't come and say, "We're free," no matter how hard I try. But this year, I've already raised most of your share. We can now say it publicly. When I first met with Superintendent Midkiff and Principal Snyder, I was saying, "Now, I'll tell you where this money's coming from, but it's not ours to announce. It's a big secret." Well, it was formally announced last Friday. The AT&amp;T Foundation believes that once a school system tries a JAG program, that community will find the money to keep it going, once they try it once. So in the, to put money where their mouth is, they have contributed $3.5 million to Jobs for America's Graduates to encourage new school systems to give the program a try. $15,000 of that money is already designated for Lincoln County, West Virginia. So I'm asking for a commitment of $5,000. That will put a full-time job specialist at Lincoln County High School, and it will change the future for about 40 kids, the 40 kids who needed the most. People love to talk down about West Virginia. I was Jim Justice's neighbor for a long time, but I got really aggravated during his campaign when he kept saying, "West Virginia's 50th at everything." Oh, we're not. You know, and I know, that this is the number-one place to live in the entire world. I would claim that to be. Honey, okay, Lincoln County's close. You know, and I know, that there are no students at Lincoln County High School who cannot be a success. But we also know there are a few who need a little help turning their own abilities loose on their own futures. I know that the way to build the West Virginia economy, indeed, the entire future of this state, begins in public education. I'm here to invite you to join Jobs for West Virginia's Graduates. Join us as we change the future of West Virginia and Lincoln County. One mortarboard at a time. Dana Snyder is here to answer any questions you may have.
Dana, how are we going to incorporate this class into the schedules for the students this week? How are we going to incorporate this class into the schedules for the students?
We already have students we talked about, we mentioned Mr. Midkiff. There's actually a We Miss Color running for JAG, so it'd be, like you said, you're pulling out 35, 40 kids. And they're juniors and seniors who are looking for electives anyway. We've probably gotten in some elective they're not really happy about being in, but once we share that with the students, what opportunities I think they'll, they'll want to do that. And as you said, if there are a certain number of students that if we get in that program, there may be some more coming in coming. Possibility.
I don't know that you mentioned that part. If you did, I missed it. Well, it won't, your commitment this year is still $5,000. But we have a new partnership with the Division of Rehabilitative Services. This is rooted in a federal law, and if you really want that, my new child, share it.
No, it's okay. All sins.
Students with disabilities have to be provided with a certain set of services. The school system isn't required to do it. The Division of Rehabilitative Services is. They're, in the schools that we serve, they use us as the provider. If you had enough students who qualified for that program, actually, you could get the program free in future years. And we think that, that's federal money, and we don't think it'll change for six or eight years. That's our guess.
The instructor, what type of certification is the instructor at?
It's like your vocational instructors. They have to have a four-year degree. They have to be employed by Jobs for West Virginia's Graduates. They have to have the approval of the principal and the superintendent. They are not necessarily certified English teachers or certified math teachers. Matter of fact, I hire kind of an assortment of folks. I have some psychology majors and some criminal justice folks and some social service folks because they need to lean on each other for expertise.
Are there a person or persons that you think would be interested in working here?
Could I introduce you to?
Oh, you said to have one, huh?
I'm right here. Been here all along.
Bill Haines is due to our program. I've known him for a long time. We worked together for another employer. And we both have very, very, very long resumes in social service because we're old now. We were very young when we started.
Quite a while.
But I think he'll be super for you.
Okay, now, as far as the time each day, are these students in that class exclusively? Or do they move on?
None. Out of the class.
Just one period a day.
Okay. So in that one period of the day, do you have multiple periods taught by this instructor?
Mm-hmm. Four, we hope.
So you divide your 40 kids or whatever you have up to those 10 in the class?
And it's, that's the secret sauce, if you will. You have, and Mr. Snyder assures me, you have a school full of great teachers, and they could all get these results if they had 10 kids at a time and a total of 40. But we've all know the math teacher and the English teacher see a couple, 300 kids during the course of a year. The secret sauce is we've got an adult there who can be, we call it intrusive mentoring. You don't wait for them to come and ask for help. You show up in their face and say, "What do you need help with today?" So we were able to, I hope I don't offend anybody. My parents, my mother taught Campbell County for 50 years. When I came home with a report card, my mother knew it was report card day, and I knew there better be certain letters on that report card, and other letters better not be there. My homework was checked every evening. I was required, from the time I was in first grade, to read every night before bed. My parents, by the way, have been together now 56, it'll be 57 years in December, and they still kind of like each other. Most of our kids don't have two parents. Part of what we're doing is doing the things that parents aren't doing. Because a lot of these kids who are already addicts, who are already convicted of felonies, the parents just aren't there, either because they can be, they don't know how to be, or they're not willing to. So a lot of what we're doing is replacing that influence.
Okay, the logistics of actually doing, so you're identifying the instructor, and you employ them through the Jobs program, by the way. And then what, is it just an agreement where Mr. Snyder and Mr. Midkiff sign off on it? Or is it required the board to do something?
I think you have to, I'm going to defer to Mr. Midkiff.
I have the copy that you gave to us, it's electronic that I've been signing.
So we, we bring the chairman in and then sign it off on it?
And it's not a contract? It says it's our intention to do this again next year?
That's going to be my next question.
But that means it's my intention to raise $40,000 for Lincoln County next year? Most of that money comes from the Appalachian Regional Commission and another stream from the AT&amp;T Foundation. If, not to get partisan, but the current administration would like to eliminate the Appalachian Regional Commission, along with the Tennessee Valley Authority and the Delta Regional Authority. If that happens, I may not be able to raise my $40,000. So we're not making a contract, we're going to do this. We're saying, "It's our intention, and we're going to work together to do this."
We wouldn't be obligated to continue that.
No.
And it's one assumption we have to make.
Yeah.
And you say you'd take ninth-grade students through seniors?
We would.
We would.
If you have, in Wyoming County, we're focusing on ninth-grade students.
I start to see it looks to me like it'd be better to start with the...
Their theory is intervene early. I like that. But our curriculum is very employment-based, and a job's an awful long way from ninth grade, we hope. So, and I can't tell you how successful that'll be for another three years or so because we're gathering data. We know it works, we do have a seniors-only program where we'll only take seniors, what I recommended in, that works in a high school with 2,000 kids in it. In a smaller school, the multi-year, if you've got a ninth grader that just needs help, we're going to take it. And we can take them multiple years. But we're also looking for those 12th graders that just aren't going to stick it out all year.
As 12th grade students, there are those that haven't acquired sufficient credits or whatever. So it's still a possibility that they wouldn't be able to graduate, just by virtue of being a little bit behind, right?
It could be. We say they have to be able to benefit. We will not take a 20-year-old student with four credits unless you have option pathway. And that's a, do you have option pathway?
It's on its way.
It's on its way, okay. We'll take that 20-year-old with four credits if you've got option pathway. Without it, you know, it's, they're going to age out before they can earn 20 credits.
With Mr. Snyder in conjunction with you all, something to make the determination that he would be able to participate, considering things like that?
Right. They will, Mr. Haines will go in with Mr. Snyder and form a local school advisory committee. At least one administrator, at least one regular ed teacher, at least one counselor, at least one special ed teacher. Try to draw in as many views as they can. And they're the ones who will go together. Obviously, I don't know who your at-risk kids are at Lincoln County High, but I bet Mr. Snyder can make the list now.
Mr. Snyder, the age-old question. Do we have a classroom for such a class?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because again, as we said, it's for evening classes, and he may have to take these cards and go from room one to room two, but they'll be roomed by the students.
It's a traveling man.
Most of our specialists live on AV cards.
All right. Members of the board, do you have any other questions or comments, thoughts?
Practically, how quickly does this get off the ground this year? Tomorrow? We approve this tonight. By this time next week, you'll have designated students.
By Monday, they'll be, it'll be a full schedule. And we do have funded, we can use federal dollars, out of $5, to support this program. So that piece has already been taken care of if the board wants to do it.
$5,000. Don't think about letting me talk longer because the longer you talk...
I know. I kept getting it lower, didn't I?
Really?
You'd be paying us $5,000 a day.
But, so is it generally the consensus among the board that we go and assume this is a trial?
But not growing up.
Okay.
For $6 million, we can put it in every high school in West Virginia. Nobody laughs at me, but nobody in Charleston's writing me a check either.
Well, it's, well, from what you've told us, it'd be money well spent. Mr. Haines, we'll be looking forward to working with you here. We might be able to get it to our gate and buy some of our college students.
You just feel free.
In all seriousness, feel free to come back at some point. Either of you, three, four months down the road, talk to us about these 40 kids you've targeted. Let us know how they're doing. You don't need to single them out by name, but let us know how the program's working here with our kids. I mean, I hear everything you're saying. I believe in it, but I'd also like to see it working on the ground here.
Well, that time I'll have a whole lot of data to back up what you're going to do.
You have names, too, aren't you?
I'll have...
Sure.
We do.
Brent Sturm, we appreciate you coming and giving us this opportunity. It sounded one of the things that we hear so often, you know, these at-risk kids. We have motivated children for sure, but then we add those R's, everything we can do to help them for ourselves. Great, so we appreciate you giving us this opportunity.
Super. Thank you.
Sounds like a great program, targeted exactly the target audience we need, the most healthcare.
Super. We're looking forward to working with you.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Snyder, identity release.
Got it. Pull back the...
You already had it.
Pull back to get the little bill.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is Greaser Lyne, and Greasy John is our head school nurse here in Lincoln County. She's going to talk about medication administration.
Yes.
Nice to have you, Ms. Lyne. Okay, here it is.
So what I have given you are is the summary of the changes to Policy 2422 that's been placed out on comment. It was included on the West Virginia Board of Education agenda on August the 9th. Okay, and during this, they're also including Narcan or Naloxone as being able to be administered by school personnel with board approval. Now, that's not the first thing I want to talk about, though. Now, that's not the first thing I want to talk about, though. Part of this policy also says that school nurses, actually anyone who has been trained, can administer epinephrine to someone experiencing a first-time reaction. Person can have a, a reaction to anything at any time, and not have a previous diagnosis. If we have stock epinephrine, we can administer epinephrine at that time, potentially save a life. The age-old question is always to me, when we do trainings, well, if someone has a reaction, can we not use an EpiPen that we already have there for someone else? No, you can't, because if you use that person's EpiPen, what if they need it, and then you have used medication prescribed for someone else? So that's a whole legal and ethical issue in itself. So if we were, um, given your approval to carry epinephrine for first-time reactions, we could administer that in the case of anaphylaxis. It is provided for in state policy, that we can train anybody to use an EpiPen. As you all know, EpiPens have become really expensive. And sometimes it's, it's difficult with training someone and feeling confident enough in their ability to assess the situation and administer that. So what we are proposing in school health is that you allow us, the nurses only, to carry epinephrine and administer that in the case of a first-time reaction, or when an EpiPen's not available. To cut the cost of that, because EpiPens, they have come down some. Last time I checked, um, it was around six hundred dollars for a pack of two. We can do that by using vials of epinephrine, or pre-filled syringes, that because we're nurses, we can figure out the dosage. And that cost would only be thirteen dollars and nineteen cents per pre-filled syringe. So we could potentially put them in every school building that we have, for a cost of a hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents. Or you could just give them to each of your five nurses, um, for sixty-five ninety-five. You're potentially saving a life by allowing us to carry epinephrine to administer during the first-time anaphylaxis reaction. So that's the first thing I'd like for you guys to consider. This has been going on in several counties for a long time. We've put it on the back burner, and kinda let everybody else, um, work out the kinks to the program, and see how it, how it went. And now we're asking for your permission to do that here.
What about the, does this require parental permission, how would you get that, or do you have to?
No, no. In the case of a first-time reaction, it's gonna be an emergency situation. We would be determining the need for that, and administering it based upon our assessment. We are protected from liability in the law, um, because of our assessment and, um, the way the policy's written.
Your expertise to be able to make that decision?
Yes, that's another reason we're asking just for the nurses. We're not, we're not ready to let anybody do it, okay? We're, um-
Well, you say first time, what about second time?
Right.
Well, um, it could be a second time, too. We're just, what we're concentrating on is, if a kid has a known peanut allergy, or a known bee allergy, we do everything we can to get that child's EpiPen, prescribed EpiPen at school. But if a kid has never had that before, they're not gonna have anything like it. If a kid has already been diagnosed, chances are that EpiPen's gonna be there.
And the parent's warranty?
The parents furnish that. We're looking for those people who have never been diagnosed before. We've had several people, I've even had two members of my staff have to start carrying EpiPens in the last year. It can happen at any time. So, that's where we're focusing. Right now, our kids that are already diagnosed, our staff members that are already diagnosed, they should be carrying their EpiPens, or they should have it at school for us to use. We're looking at that person who does it for the first time.
Will we all still have to give the shots to those people?
Mm-hmm.
And the teacher?
The teacher can, can actually do that, but those are easier, they're in a pen, and you just take the, the lid off, and you jab it into the side of your head. This would require us to, um, take a syringe, put a needle on, get the, a right dose, and then inject the person.
What do you see as the cost, you said so much for school, for parenting schools? Initially, would you, you have like an estimate of what the cost would be?
It's at sixty-five dollars, and only the nurses have sixty million dollar total?
Yes, uh, it may be, I can't remember honestly when I did this, 'cause I did it in June.
I mean, is that first school, or for the, everybody that's-
For a hundred dollars, you can give all of us a little kit with the syringe, set, a pair of gloves, the needles we need, even if we had to resort to the little vials, where we drew it up and then changed needles. Um, for a hundred dollars, you can outfit all five of your nurses with that.
You just carry it with you?
We carry it with us, wherever we're-
So if somebody didn't have insurance, and you're telling them to send this for their child, and they don't send one, you will have that, and you will give it, even if they don't send it?
Yeah, I would.
Now, on the school buses, what the kids do that are on the buses? I mean, I know you didn't, I'm not on the first time, but I'm probably just gonna give them that period.
Um, students who, um, are on the school bus, most of them will, can transport their EpiPens in their backpacks with them from the classroom home, okay? If they are stung on the school bus, this new revision to the policy allows the bus drivers to administer an EpiPen to them. But like I said, EpiPens are easier, they're pre-dosed, you don't have to figure anything out. The directions are on the pen, you just have to pull it out, take off the cap, and jab it in your leg.
And all those kids are already identified?
They're already identified.
I know on my bus, people might be, right?
Yes.
And as to what you're proposing, the, the child who's never had a anaphylactic reaction, that gets stung on the bus for the first time, that's, that's outside our control, because that situation requires a nurse to assess and determine that administration of epinephrine is necessary.
Right.
But if, if, if a child has a previously diagnosed allergy to whatever, and they get stung, and there's no, you know, there's no syringe drawn epinephrine available on the bus, and another child has an EpiPen, that's outside your control?
That is outside my control.
What would a bus driver do in that situation?
He has to decide that for himself.
Would he be protected from liability, the same way you are, if you administer epinephrine? Or would a bus driver be taking on personal, or board reli- liability, or reliability, so not reliability?
Um, I would say no. I would say he would not be, be protected, because at that point, he would be administering someone else's prescribed medication to another person. That's where it gets sticky.
Does it, that, given the policy, or the policy of the law, it's been a while since I've read it, as far as bus drivers are concerned, that they have to undergo some training, I mean, there would have to be some, something, you know, to explain these types of scenarios to drivers?
Yes.
And if they're not trained, then they wouldn't be liable, like, for the kid not to have it, but-
No, but to be honest, all of our bus drivers undergo CPR and first aid training, and we teach about anaphylaxis and EpiPen administration in that class. We had a class today, it's about our five, they learned about that. Now, did we take them aside and say, "Okay, little Johnny has an EpiPen," and go with them through all the steps, and have them do that? No, we didn't do that. If you all decide that, um, we're gonna let them do that, then I'll take care of that, and I've already discussed that with Mr. Clemens.
And it is a may, uh, the board's may allow with bus operators, if there is one.
And could require a bus operator?
But no. He would have to be really trained on it well, because there's different dosage for smaller children than there is for the larger ones.
Well, if we're just going with what's prescribed for that child, then their, their syringe is gonna have their dosage in it. Because you, the, the typical dosage is point one-five milligrams and point three-zero milligrams. Point one-five being for, uh, younger children, and point three being for larger children and adults. So if that child is prescribed that pen, then that's gonna be the right dosage for them.
For that child, but another child, a, a larger adult, it wouldn't hurt them, but it really wouldn't help them either. But then you take that large dose and give it to a younger child, it may, probably not.
Let's look at this step by step. The first, uh, request was for providing, for the first time, uh, what is the term?
Administration by nurses?
Yes.
By nurses, just for those that are ten feet and aren't, and don't use this. What's the feeling there, if everybody thinks it's a good idea? Okay, I think we're all okay on that, it'd be a worthy thing to do, and cost worthy to pay.
Yeah.
Okay, now, as far as having a bus driver, I don't know if we wanted to make that decision tonight or not.
I think, um, I mean, I know that's something we kind of thought all over.
Well, not only that, but we're gonna run that by our legal counsel and things like that, as far as liability, I mean, before we make that decision. There are obviously pros and cons to that.
And again, that policy is out on public comment right now, so, you know, we're just getting the ball rolling here.
Well, when you said it's on public comment, is already, is it, so the state board hasn't approved of where, I know the law has been for it, to say they made it, it's-
Yes.
But the state board hasn't adopted a policy-
Not for bus drivers yet, no, not for bus drivers.
We wouldn't be able to do that yet anyway, then? So the state board adopts a policy?
Right.
Okay, that, because that's a time to adopt that. You keep us updated, it used to be fifteen-two, as to the status of that, um, when this will come down, but a party of others up where they act on, I expect.
Uh, I think it's ahead of the day, but I can't remember.
Some topics, the second week in September, maybe twelve and thirteen minutes.
Something like that.
We'll kind of be monitoring that, too, to see what we see, if you, a lot of the highlights, and maybe talk from the top of the news and things. We'll decide that, if we find out more about it, okay?
Okay. All right, the last thing I want to talk to you all about was the possibility of us, in the future, carrying naloxone in the cases of overdoses at school. I know that there are a lot of, um, feelings on both sides of this issue. I hear it all the time in the public, and that, that's not why I'm here. I just want to, um, let you all know that, that is also a possibility, that that will be approved, and we will have that ability to carry that. I do not believe that if we would have to administer this in Lincoln County schools, I do not believe that I would be administering it to a chronic heavy drug user. I envision it being required for a child who's suicidal, um, somebody who may have tried something for the first time, or somebody who got, slipped something and didn't even know it. Or a kid who accidentally ingested something at home, but they didn't know what it was. We had, to my knowledge, only one overdose last year at the high school. That was a, um, situation involving, um, depression, and a, um, spur of the moment bad decision.
How was that treated?
Um, the student had a seizure, we called an ambulance, and that student was transported to the hospital.
So we don't know if they were given, um-
Naloxone.
I'm sorry, not?
Um, I do not know. I was not present that day, and I didn't get the details following that.
Are you aware of any, uh, because, are the EMTs, the emergency personnel in the county, are, do they carry this?
EMTs in the county do. None of our, none of our police officers at this point have naloxone.
Nor do their firemen, or like, they don't?
No, the only people that have it at this point are our ambulance personnel. Now, the state police are in the process, they will carry it at, at some point in the future, but right now, they do not.
Do you know of any instances where the EMT personnel have administered this county?
In this county, yes, several.
How, but you know where they were depressed, or it was their first time they got some, how, how do you know that?
Well, you don't.
Well, I mean-
You don't, but here's the thing.
Given it to someone, given it to someone like that?
If I find a student who is unresponsive, if they're not breathing, most of the time, another student knows whether they've taken something or not. If I would suspect that this was the result of an overdose of opioids, and it only works on opioids, I would want to give that student naloxone. Now, if they haven't taken an opioid, it's not gonna do anything to them. If they have, it competes with the receptors in the brain, and that student should wake up and start, um, breathing again. And I know that there'll be questions about who would you give it to? Would you give it to just students? Would you give it to staff members? Would you give it to a parent who came in off the street, and was there for an IP meeting, and, and dropped? I think, I'm a nurse, okay? If I think they need it, I will give it to them. But we're in the business of children. Children make bad decisions, and children haven't always reached the point where they can make good, informed decisions when it comes to this kind of stuff. I want you guys to really consider that when, when you discuss this.
Okay, now, nurses are the only ones that could do this?
Honestly, no.
Well, explaining who could, interestingly.
If, if you go by what's allowed, anybody can. I can walk in down at Rite Aid right now, and pay forty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, and get me a dose of naloxone.
But if the Board of Education could make a decision as to who we would permit to, if they allow it, or not?
Well, we like to start with just us.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we did permit this at some point, we could limit it, if only certain people that do it do it correctly?
Yes, you could limit it to the nurses, or you could say, no, it's, it's up to you guys.
Or you could say, like we're saying, this other, we're personally, anyone, so like, does anybody can do it?
Pretty much.
Anybody that you train?
About you train.
They're eventually gonna pass it out to families, to get to their own children, their husbands, their wives.
Can I go down there and buy them?
Yes.
Without a prescription?
Yes.
How much does this cost, for this prescription?
Uh, if, if I, we were looking at pre-filled syringes, a point-four milligram dose is what they like for injections. It, it causes the least withdrawal symptoms when they're, when you're waking them up, okay? They're forty-nine eighty-nine a dose, but if you buy a pack of ten, they're like two, two forty-nine, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for ten doses. But I can, we called Rite Aid about an hour ago. You can go in down here at Rite Aid and tell them, um, you have a family member that's a drug user, or that you're a drug user, and you need a dose of naloxone, and they will give it to you with their savings card, and it will cost you forty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
What's a shelf life for them?
Um, I'm thinking a year, I think it's a year. You know what, Mr. Wilkerson, I didn't check that well enough.
Does it have to be refrigerated, or?
Uh-uh, no, doesn't have to be refrigerated.
Hey, if only nurses, when we're talking-
Hey, i- i- if only nurses, when we're talking theoretically here, assuming we would agree to allow anyone to receive this here, if only nurses can administer, why would we want to go with pre-filled syringes? Could you not go the vial and needle route with this as you plan to do with the epinephrine?
Well, that would, these, um, you could go the vial route where you have to draw it up. The, the cost was not gonna be, um, you can't get it in this small of a dose. You would have to use like a ten milliliter vial, like a multi-dose vial. Um, I just, if, wait.
So for two hundred and fifty dollars, you can get ten doses?
Yes.
And you administered how many in the county last year? None?
Us, none.
Right, none. How many would you anticipate when it becomes available? Because I personally have a real concern with addicts and their behaviors. I don't think it's coincidence that a lot of addicts do their drugs near places where they know they can get this drug to reverse if they get a really hot dose. I don't think that's coincidence. I don't think it would be coincidence here. So how many doses would you anticipate administering in a year if nurses were allowed to administer this drug to students, faculty, family members that are on premise for a specific purpose?
Thinking of instances in the past year, I can think of three possibilities where we almost had that, that scenario.
So you have five, we have four, five nurses?
We have five, no, we have four, uh, RNs who are certified school nurses and we have one LPN that is based at one school.
So all five of you could currently administer this? Assess the situation, make a determination that there is a need, is there also liability protection in this situation?
There is.
I believe I read that there is.
And the assessment part of it is a little bit sticky when it comes to RN versus LPN law and you may want to limit it only to the RNs. That's another, um, thing that we might want to consider.
Well, how, how soon do you have to get to someone when they overdose or this, or before this war?
Or before it's too late.
Before it's too late. Well.
Brain damage occurs, what, three to five minutes without oxygen?
Three to five minutes, which is.
Yeah, but we don't have a school nurse in the school all day long, do we?
You don't. But the most likely place that it would happen if a kid did it to them's ankles. Now, um, we do have some situations, we have had at the elementaries and the middle schools that kids have come in and we felt that they were under the influence of something that they had taken at home. But for all intents and purposes, we figure that this is, will happen at the high school.
Right.
Okay? Um, they are, this, this school year, um, they are four days a week.
Well, also the ambulance service is about two minutes away from the high school, too.
Yes, they're there. I had a student.
They've got a clinic. They don't have this stuff at the clinic? They have Valley, there's a doctor's law clinic.
Well, at Harts, they're only in the school one day a week.
Yeah, but they're right there beside the school.
No, they're not. No, they're not.
Couldn't get them to the clinic in time. If they were at the school, you couldn't, you couldn't drive fast enough to get them to the clinic in time.
No.
I thought they were close to the school, but they're on up the road.
They're all up there.
And depending upon the policies that they're following.
It's not more than a mile from the Harts Middle School to the clinic.
Are you gonna put that kid in your personal vehicle and take him up there?
I mean, are you gonna be on, on premise full-time at Harts? I mean, how, how often do we have a nurse on premise at Harts?
Three days a week.
Okay, so that leaves, that's sixty percent of the time that i- if we approve this policy, there's someone on, someone there that could administer within this theoretical three to five minutes after breathing cessation. What are you gonna do the other forty percent of the time? You're gonna take them to the clinic? Right, well, I, I, I mean, I, I think what Fred said, yes, is a viable option. I'm not opposed to this in very limited circumstances, which we'll get to. But I, I, I think Fred raises a very valid point that literally across the river sets an ambulance service here. We have a clinic on premise at Guyan Valley. Duval is a third, lots of volunteer, is an ambulance service there? Is a volunteer fire that's kind of catty-cornered to the school?
In May, we had our PEBUS Rewards Day at the high school.
May is the only school that I've.
All of the kids were out doing activities and everything, but it wouldn't have mattered where they would have been that day because the result would have been the same. At the high school, I had a student, I had to call two ambulances that day. The last student I had to call an ambulance for had a seizure in the bathroom. I had to wait thirty five minutes on an ambulance. Just because we have an ambulance service nearby doesn't mean there's gonna be an ambulance there. They're across the county.
Yeah, but the clinic probably.
There are a lot of things that the clinic won't treat. If a kid is assaulted, they won't treat them.
You have a parent overdose, I'm sure they could treat them.
Now, if there's a doctor there, they have to, they think you have to go.
That's right. Chris, is there, can one get it, have an adverse reaction if given this and that's not really, what is wrong with it?
Not generally, but you can't say that one hundred percent because nothing is without, nothing is with, without risks. You never.
Is this policy, uh, that you referred to or is this a part of this policy also?
Yes.
So at, at this point, the state board is not approving this, so this is not something that we, once, this is something we can be thinking about despite she has it right.
Right. Up to this point, we have had a few counties in the state, I think Barber County was the first one, to go ahead and do this on a way through the state board. They have done it for a couple of years and now, um, the, uh, what's the human council of school nurses took this up and decided to, um, present it to be included in the policy.
So hopefully you may do it.
You may. You don't have to. You may.
Do you know, have any ideas to maybe number statewide where this is happening? The statistics, you're aware of?
I looked for that, um, and beyond, um, contacting all of the school nurses, um, I wasn't able to come up with those numbers.
I just thought there was a, it seemed to me that it's likely, is there certain areas of our forefront that have a problem?
Yes, I agree with that. And, and the hope is that we would have this and never, ever have to use it. But I also know that I don't wanna stand there and watch somebody die knowing that I could have saved their life.
Okay, so are, are you telling us that's not my guy, that you want, that you would, you would like for us to implement this policy in some fashion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Minkin?
In some fashion.
Okay.
What I'm sharing with you, and I've shared this with Teresa.
Yes.
We've had a conversation with our attorney, Mrs. Tyree, uh, and she's advising the board not to, to do this correction, which can be non-adjuvant, some potential sparks, I mean, liability concerns that come up as a result, not only protecting the daughter nurses in case there would be an adverse reaction or something went wrong, uh, but it just, the people, uh, causing it associated, um, with something like that with that nature of her on the board. So her advice is not, not to make a deal with that.
Chris, I have a question. You're injecting this with a syringe, right?
Yes.
And how do you inject it in the vein or stick it?
It can go, it can go in either, uh, the vein, the muscle or some tiny piece of tissue. So it doesn't matter where you stick it, it's gonna absorb.
So, uh, a trained person, other than a nurse, really couldn't go on, go wrong doing an injection if they do it in the muscle, whatever. Only in the vein, that would be, would it work?
Uh, it would be, but it's the same thing that I tell people when we teach a kind of good group, like if it goes in the vein, it'll just get there quicker. It'll work quicker. Um, you can get it in a nasal spray, but those, that's more expensive and it's a higher concentration and, um.
Is it not breathing? Is it more absorbed?
It absorbs, but, um, but then the, um, higher concentration, you also have the risk of if somebody is a drug user, you're gonna bring them into withdrawal almost immediately and you're gonna probably have a real violent, sick personal loss.
When it's still walking, so when it's administered and, and the person is revived, what is that like? Like, I, I'm really curious as to, I mean, if they.
It's pretty much instantaneous cure. They walk away in, in two to three minutes after administration. They come back from dead, pissed off that they lost their high.
That's true, man. That's true.
Read, read the published, watch the news, read the published reports. How many of them are angry that they lost their high because they, their life was saved? But that, 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 that's habitual drug use. That's not what we're talking about.
Their life saved somehow, but it's not, some of them may be, they're thinking on their hands.
Now, there's some of them that get it, get it administered two, three times a day, right?
Yeah, that's true. And, and there's been, you know, legislation proposed that, you know, after so many times you don't give it to them. Well, you know, there's problems with that too. You're not gonna be there every time. Unless the same person runs that call every time, you're not gonna know that they, oh, they've already had three times, we're not gonna use it.
Now, these drug users are used at all times. When it gets over, it doesn't work for them?
No, no, no. Because nor can, basically what happens is that it, it attaches to the receptors in your brain.
You can always move.
And keeps it from, from.
It blocks it.
Blocks it. But it only works from thirty to ninety minutes. It may work for thirty minutes and then, you know, if they took a big dose, it stops working and then they may crash again. Um, and it tells you, you know, they may need multiple doses.
Yeah, we, uh, we've seen, uh, discussions of the episodes of this power that maybe someone comes in contact with. What, what do you think?
With a fentanyl mixed with the heroin.
Yeah, fentanyl, they're, they're using fentanyl, um, when they cut the heroin.
But I mean, does this address that also?
It does. But the big danger right now is the car fentanyl, which is, um, like fentanyl, but it's, it's stronger. It's used as an elephant tranquilizer, actually. And it can actually be airborne. So if you're around where they're using it, it can be airborne. And if I was using it, Mr. Chrisley, you might inhale it and overdose.
And that's the culprit that we see that's causing the medical personnel who are in the same room as people who have overdosed to hit the ground and have to provide.
Yes.
And that is the very reason that I think, I don't wanna disregard, being, being a lawyer, I certainly don't wanna disregard legal counsel's advice, but it's that situation that concerns me more than any other, where you have a truly innocent. Now, someone who has deliberately stuck that needle in their vein or popped that in their mouth, I have much less sympathy for that person than I do the student that attempts to help an overdosing student or the faculty member or the parent that happens to be standing there and gets an incidental overdose or a contact overdose. That's the person that concerns me, the truly innocent person. I mean, the cost of this is low. There are liabilities. I, I don't, I don't think we can do anything until the Department of Education approves this, State Department approves it and gives us more guidelines. But it's that scenario where you have truly completely innocent people or children that come into contact with their parents that, that's, that's where my concern lies. I'm not opposed to this under very rigorous guidelines, administration. Only in those instances where you're ninety eight percent sure that it's going to be effective. I don't care that it doesn't have a, a lot of side effects if you're wrong. If we know it's an overdose and you'll know, look at that person, there are signs other than they're passed out not breathing. You'll know, you're trained to know those things. But the problem is, and you all, all probably thought about this, it's a slippery slope. Once you start down it, where do you, as a trained medical person, you're standing there with that syringe and you see a person overdosing, but they're outside the bounds that we've allowed you to say, what are you gonna do then? You've already told us. You told us what you're gonna do. And then you'll have no liability protection if something goes wrong because you've exceeded the scope of authority we gave you. But we'll be liable for your actions.
No, she'll, she'll be covered. She'll be covered.
But that's, you know, Liz, Liz's concern is that, that, that only, it's only nurses can make that decision in that moment.
It's for a second.
You know, and, and that's, that's what I'm concerned.
Yep.
One of the wrong decisions, right? You know, the liability.
That's why I asked what the adverse things were.
And there aren't, there aren't basically no side effects, is that right?
Usually there are not. But again, you can't say anything. If we said absolutely not, then tomorrow we'd see something that was horrendous.
When do our standard form paperwork, I want to go out to students tomorrow? See, we need to have had this discussion two, three weeks ago because the way to get around a lot of this is a waiver by the parents. And I'm saying, very simply, if a trained school nurse believes my child is suffering from the effects of a opioid overdose, I give permission to administer, I can't pronounce the names of the drugs, and, and waive any liability. It's not completely effective, no. It's not completely effective from a legal perspective. No waiver ever is. Always loopholes. But I think this is a real problem. We've been shielded from it here, but working in Huntington, it is a common everyday occurrence. I'll bet it's a lot bigger problem in Campbell County schools, isn't it? Because it's more available there, but, you know, like, like Brad, as you mentioned, this, this drug problem eventually takes care of itself because your, your demand goes down because the people use it to kill themselves off. It's gotta always have somebody there to, to revive them. So what happens? What's that market gonna spread? It's gonna spread in the rural areas. And I understand from watching the news is the cost of this is so low now compared to what it used to be and the potency is so high that it's gonna be available here and we're gonna have to deal with this and we are gonna lose students to this.
In your recommendations, would it be the only, school nurses are the, the only ones that can do this? I mean, what would you think?
Yes.
And to whom? Administer it to whom?
Anybody.
Anybody that needs it.
That's not gonna happen from this.
You could, and, and you could fix that by saying that we were gonna stock it at the school, that it was gonna be in our emergency box at the school and we wouldn't be carrying it on us from place to place.
Well, that's what you said, ten doses, two hundred and forty nine dollars, you stock each school with a certain number of doses.
So when I drive, when I get in my car and, and do my drive from Lincoln County High School to Ranger, then if I see somebody on the side of the road, I'm gonna have it with me to administer it to them. But, you know, then we could take care of whoever's on school property.
What about, what about ball games? Would you be carrying it to ball games?
Being the emergency kit at the school, correct?
It would be in the emergency kit at the school.
There's no guarantee you're gonna be at ball games then.
No.
It's not within your job responsibility.
I'm not required to be at ball games, no.
Well, any of these things are just coincidental, whether you are there or not.
Um, but you said last year there were three, three instances where had you had this available, you would have administered it?
I might, I might have, it was headed that direction. We had two cases involving parents that I believe that if they had been in their presence for twenty or thirty minutes longer, we may have had to call an ambulance for them. And then the student over here, that might have been a case had that student stopped breathing. But ambulance personnel were in, were in station and they got over there pretty quick. So three instances, I think, that we might.
We eventually will have to make a decision whether we permit it to be used. Right, secondly, uh, who may administer it, we allow it to be used. And then, I think what Mr. Baker's saying, then who would we permit you to use it on?
On school grounds.
Realistically, you have to be allowed to administer it on school property. Otherwise, you've created liability on the first.
I'm just taking that for granted. I mean, so anyone that would have an overdose on school property, you would administer it to?
Could.
Could.
Well, I'm asking you, is that your thinking?
Yes.
Now, I mean, once again, what I would say to the board, it would have to make a decision. One, are we gonna allow it all?
Right.
Secondly, who are we gonna allow to do it? And thirdly, who are we gonna allow you to do it to?
Right.
But, um.
And again, we're starting this conversation now, so you all can think this over.
Well, we understand that we have, we've done, have, we've thought about some. I know, uh, there was this thought about, you know, I don't know that a drug user gets up today and say, I'm gonna. want to OD today, so I'm going to go out there to the school where they'll take care of me. Um, I don't know that they have that mindset. Do I do it as a...
Yes, they do.
Well, I don't know that they do. But also, it's assuming they do, I got to think about those scenarios. Then I begin to think about students. If I'm a student and I'm, I'm a drug user, where am I best protected and know that they're going to take care of me in case I OD at school? So, that, you know, I've turned that right around to the student would be more apt to do it in school as a...
Absolutely, and I agree.
Somebody that comes in off the street.
Especially if they know there's Narcan there.
Right. But ultimately, I think it'd be very difficult for you or somebody else to sit there and not take care of somebody, but those are the three decisions we have to make.
Yes.
Okay, since with, uh, short of a waiver, this would, these decisions we have to make after the state board acts.
After it comes off, public comment, yes.
All right. Anybody else have any, Mr. Wilk, do you act like you have a question or are you...
I have no additional questions at this time.
How about comments?
Any other comments?
You have comments, Larry, let's hear them. We value your opinion.
Uh, what's yours?
I just got a little irritated when I thought, you know, we're going to provide Narcan, but yet we didn't provide epinephrine, you know, and, and that's something the child didn't do to themselves, you know, that...
Is that what you're wondering?
Well, I, we want to do epinephrine, and, and we were in the process of doing that a couple of years ago, um, and we were getting it through a program that gave EpiPens to schools for free. And then we suddenly had the big jump in the prices and that program shut down, we didn't get them. Um, but now, I, I think if you allow just the nurses to do it, you know, with air skillset, we can draw it up, we don't have to rely on the EpiPen. Um, and I did provide you with emails between Rebecca King and myself, um, because I had a question, because in the language, it keeps referring to auto-injectors. And my specific question to her was, does that just refer to laypeople, can nurses use vials? And, and she said yes, so we could use vials for epinephrine, and it's shared.
Who is Rebecca King?
Rebecca King, she is our liaison at the State Department.
State Department. I wish she had been in board. Okay, uh, Mr. Biggitt, would you be surprised at the status of this policy of the state board? Everybody, you know, we can, we know kind of the three levels of the decisions we have to make, which we don't make, number one, we don't have to worry about doing...
No, you don't have to worry about it. But epinephrine, we're good with the nurses taking care of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll wait on the...
Don't we have to have a waiver or something?
Well, I mean, what's, what's the policy? If it, if the policy permits it, then I think...
Yeah, it's already, it's already...
I will, we'll have to see if we have to formally...
Can you tell us if the epinephrine policy is still on comment here, thirty days?
For bus drivers.
Bus drivers, okay.
Yes, not for us.
We, lots of counties out there are already...
Yes.
Well, we'll have to see if we have to act on it, you have to decide there or not.
We can do it since it's, she's on here.
Well, but it's not an action item for us to act on here, so we could do it if it draws, potentially we can do it next week, come on the twenty-fourth.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back.
Everybody can anticipate this will be a short talk.
Mr. Wilk, they took up all your time briefly. Uh, you have to go to rest, Chris.
Not for a while.
Okay, uh, no, I'm not going to talk too long, but I did attend the, uh, the meeting that was held, uh, Saturday in Stonewall, and there was representative from every county board of education, uh, there was a select representation from RESSAs and from, uh, Howard Super was there, the attorney aspect, Jason Butcher was there, who's a State Department person that's been working, uh, with this whole concept of RESSAs and what might replacement, all this kind of thing. So, all of that took place, and of course Howard O'Call was kind of like the host of the School Board Association. Now, the reason I wanted to update you because, and I'll give you kind of a little synopsis of each one of these three policies, but at the fall conference, you can expect that this is going to be a focus of what's going to go on, one of the things. Now, what we did at our meeting is we went through each one of these three policies that I provided you a copy of here, um, and we looked at, and we were in groups, and each group did look to see, uh, we were, our task was to look at the advantages and disadvantages of each of these that you're going to see here. And then we presented those. Now, following the conference, Dr. O'Call was forming a committee of eleven volunteers, and I don't know who they were, but one of them wasn't me, uh, who were going to compile the results of the advantages and disadvantages of, of ESC's cooperative agreements. Now, at your fall conference, these will be presented to you, all of us that go to the conference, there'll be sessions that don't take place there, and these will be presented to you, and you're going to see cooperative agreements, and you'll see, you'll get the same thing we got here, and they're, they're going to give you a little overview of what it is, and then you're going to say, well, at the meeting that's already been held, they have looked at this, and they found that here's some advantages to cooperative agreements, here's some disadvantages to it, and they'll do the same thing with the ESCs. Now, the way I understand talking to Dr. O'Call, what he's doing there to, since you're, you know, the, the group is wide now, and then they'll say, okay, it'll probably be broken up into groups again, now, you guys look at it, and do you see advantages and disadvantages of the not already been stated? So, you know, you've got a bigger group of people, you know, there we had fifty-five board members and other people, but now we're going to have two hundred and seventy, whatever it is. So, uh, then you're going to have others that have actually given it some thought. Uh, as I learned, you know, talking to people throughout the day, there are counties that have not given this one IO a thought, they haven't even thought about it at all, haven't even thought about whether they want to have a, a cooperative or an ESC, they haven't even, they haven't considered. I talked to other people who have already decided, no way we're not doing this, doesn't help us any, we're in a geographical location and we're just too big, and there was all kinds of those. Then there were those that, we're going to do this, you know, I mean, an ESC. So, you want us to hear all of this. Now, what they intend to do at that conference, once again, is to look at the pros and cons of these, and then, uh, come up with advantages and disadvantages, probably at the end of that they'll, you know, compile them for everyone and more than likely send them to you. But Dr. O'Call, I asked him later on, I said, now, what is, I've been asking this for months now at these recent meetings, uh, one I used to ask was, does, does the county board have to approve what they're, they're being one of these? No, of course, finally, we've got an answer, yes, you do, and the county, the Lincoln County Board or any other board of education would have to at some point, and Howard thinks that the, they're going to provide us a template of that, but that would be by mid-November, that the county boards would have to pass, uh, a motion to say, uh, the Lincoln County Board of Education wants to enter into, let's say, we want to enter into a educational services cooperative, uh, RESSAs, we, I use, I just use them interchangeably, you know, it's not the same, but we want to enter, uh, enter into one of the factors, July the first, two thousand and eighteen, and we're going to state the counties we want to enter them with. That was the other question I always ask, you know, how do you do this? You don't know who's participating. So, uh, we would have to do that, it looks like, by, if we chose to do one, by mid-November, because you have to remember here now, you, this, RESSAs are gone as of June the thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, so you're just looking at what, six, eight months there, until RESSAs are going to be gone, and if you're going to go to an ESC, you're going to have, there's a lot of work to be done, uh, you know, logistically, where's it going to be, and who's going to be there, who's going to work there, what services you want to provide, all kinds of things, uh, that will have to be decided upon, so, but that's kind of the timeframe for this thing. Now, um, I think it was Jason Butcher from the State Department said, uh, and I'm sure, like Jeff, we have a meeting next week and, and a recent meeting, a regional council meeting, this will be a topic for us, I'm sure, and, you know, as we talk to the six counties in our region, you know, Jeff and I, we know that we get next to most, we're not sure what our six counties are going to do, but now, please remember, and I'll show you just a second, we're not limited to our six counties. This can be, we can be in an ESC agreement with any county, any one of the state, you know, they could be a part of ours, so we could pass our motion, get, you know, obviously they want to do it too, uh, but it, they could be there. So they, you know, the idea of our RESA, you know, you think of that, plus we're kind of a media with everyone, but it should, should some of those not want to participate, that doesn't mean that others can't, or all these six could, and then others still could, you could expand your RESA or your co-op, so, you know, that's just the kind of things. But now, after this conference is over, it, it kind of has been the almost appears to be, it's going to be on the superintendents of each county to converse, get with the counties that they think may have an interest, or contact everyone, you know, maybe Jeff's talked to counties that are around or whatever, and, you know, try to get a feel for you, third county is interested in doing this. And then they're going to have to get, you know, talk to their board members, and they are going to have to do the same thing we're going to do, but, you know, they, we can't go in here and, uh, pass a motion saying these counties, but those at least have an idea that maybe they're interested too. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't back out, or maybe later on, a month or two, or next February, somebody else says, well, you all decided to form an ESC, well, we decided we'd like to be, be in your halls too, and we could add them, so those kind of things can happen. But here at the beginning, it'll probably be at the regional council meetings, we'll be discussing this, we'll get a feel from the six counties in our region as this goes on, we think. But then Jeff will be, uh, talking with other counties, and I know he's our RESE, but some other counties that aren't in our RESE, and to see if they have an interest. Uh, so, that's kind of where the, you know, I wanted to just lay the groundwork of what's going to happen at the fall conference and kind of a timeline for where we're going to go. Now, let me just briefly talk about these three policies, that, these are actually laws that were passed last year, three laws. Now, the first one is the county superintendent's advisory council. Now, you know, uh, we all heard about where they passed this idea of quadrants, you know, they divided the state into four parts, and we've, you know, we used to go to meetings, you know, why are they doing this, why did they do it? We still sometimes ask that question. Well, this kind of gives you a feel for what's going on here. Uh, they divided, and they've already, the superintendents and the state all met together in Charleston or somewhere, in Charleston, and they divided the, the state up into four parts. And the part we're in is quadrant number two, and Mr. Biggitt told me that, or I wouldn't have known it. And it can, is basically what is RESE two and RESE three, those counties, so it's our six counties, then RESE three is Canal, Plutnum, Clay, and Boone, so there's ten counties in quadrant number two, right? Okay, so the other, the rest of the state has been divided into these four quadrants. Okay, now, each of these quadrants of super, these ten in our quadrant, they then selected the superintendent that will represent their quadrant and state meetings, and that's Jack Cullen, he's superintendent of Mason County. So, the, uh, superintendents are required, and this will tell you like the similar, the, the number of times, I'm not going to get into that, you look at yourself, but how often the superintendents have to meet in their quadrant, how often quadrants have to meet annually, that's stated in this policy. Uh, then, once, when they meet, they're going to talk about different things, such as what we often talked about, uh, at, uh, regional RESE meetings, how can we share services, uh, what laws are impeding us, what other laws could help us, those kind of things that we would talk about at those regional meetings, these guys and gals are going to talk about at these quadrant meetings. So, I know Mr. Wilkinson's asked me numerous times, but we still have to go to those meetings in July, but the answer is no, that's been done away with. Those regional, uh, meetings that were here in July are no longer required, so come next July, board members, you don't have to do that anymore. But to accomplish the same thing, the quadrants are going to do that, because what the superintendent senate quadrant will do, they will share their thoughts of their quadrant, their counties, and then when they are then going to meet in Charleston, and Jack Cullen will be representing our quadrant and along with the others there, and they will meet, and you'll see here, they have semi, semi-annual meetings with the state superintendent of schools, then they're going to have a, they have to meet annually with the state board, and then there's a legislative requirement there too. And the idea behind all that is when this smaller group go, let's say, they, the state superintendent of schools, they're going to say, you know, we've come up with these things, and you've got four superintendents, and I guess there's probably some other people involved too there, but it's a smaller group, they're going to say, here are some things that have come out of ours that could help us, you know, or, you know, we could, not just necessarily share services, but different things that could help us, or maybe these laws really need to be changed, they're really hindering us in some way. So that way, the state superintendent, then later the state board, get this information in the, in much, the same type of information, but in a different manner, it's more direct, and it's, but it's come from the sources from the counties. And then the legislature also gets this, and that then is then possibly the impetus to act on it and legislate or the state board policy can be done. So that's kind of the way, that's what this is, is this quadrant, state superintendent, county superintendents, and they lead their way up to, you know, to get this input. Now, uh, the next one you have is the cooperative agreements. Now, cooperative agreements, and this is always, we always ask to, because it seems we've read this, and we were right, and Jeff and I talked about it, that any county can enter into a cooperative agreement with any other county, they don't have to be next door to, you know, we could enter into one with Morgan County, Lincoln County and Morgan County could enter into a cooperative agreement to do anything, you know, if you see some of the examples here, they cite, or they state what the various things you could do, uh, like you see purchasing, you know, of course, we do, you know, cooperative purchasing in RESE right now, so that's a pretty common one to do, but there might be something that's more specialized that you find that you want to enter into with the county, uh, we're not really sure about this, but it could be food service, you know, we're not sure how that's going to be, you know, we have an agreement by, we could really right now go through RESE, but it's Campbell County that we're in, that we're working with. So, in theory, Lincoln County and Campbell County could have a cooperative agreement for food service, as an example. So, these are some of the things that, and once again, in our groups, we've looked at these to see what are the advantages being in a cooperative agreement, what are the disadvantages of it, you know, so we talked about some of those kind of things. But you see, a county board may, but you're not required to enter into these, but you can, the legislature, you know, the law has now been passed, it would give us the, we can legally do that. Okay, now, in addition to cooperative agreements, then you have the next one, which are educational service cooperatives, kind of like our RESE, and this is the same type of thing, except this is a little bit more complicated. Now, typically, a group of counties are in, there's not a minimum or a maximum on the number, that may enter into a, a regional public service agency, like, kind of like RESE. And, uh, if they were, once again, you're going to see advantages to that and disadvantages to that. Uh, now, there were many things you want to hear about, I mean, Fred and I were talking about one day about cooperative purchasing, and how the more counties you have in your group, then the more you're going to save, you know, just one county, you're going to get a cooperative, if you get, you got twenty counties, so that's an advantage in, in, uh, an ESC for cooperative purchasing, and we've been doing for a long time, we save a lot of money on it. So that's just one example of a, of a, an advantage through this system here of, um, the ESC. Uh, other things would be, uh, let's say, talk about legal services. Now, legal services, you all know, we save a lot of money on legal services, and our, or potential ESC that would be developed could have legal services. And I fully expect if there's an ESC, it's in this neck of the woods, that they're going to have legal services, because I think Wesley and Tyree has kind of committed to that. Now, as Mr. Biggitt knows, statewide, there has been a lot of interest in legal services, and they get, and where do they go to, because they thought they called RESE too? And what they're thinking is, can we get to be a part of that? And this was before they even abolished RESSAs. See, a year or so ago, before they abolished RESSAs, we were talking at RESE meetings about expanding legal services to permit counties in other places to, uh, we'd give them service. Now, the catch twenty-two for that, for those counties are, if you're in that ESC, one of the advantages of being in there, your cost to be, receive legal services, or, you know, ours is based on per pupil basis. ours is based on per pupil basis. Whereas if, uh, Montague County wants to enter into, uh, legal services with our ESC, they don't get a per pupil because the national, lady was there and spoke to our group, this is overall what we'll call educational service agencies, what they call nationally. Forty-five states do these, but what you can say, you, you're going to charge that county fifteen or twenty percent surcharge for being a party to get those legal services. So, that's one that all like to hear. It's very popular, RESE two is the one that does it and I think you're going to see whatever, if this does occur, that'll be one of the things that this ESC will do, be legal services. And what does that do? Well, it helps you fund, you do other things. Yes, exactly. Another advantage to an ESC opposed to a cooperative agreement is grants. You remember last year, we heard that statewide, RESE's brought in about fifty million dollars in grants a year? Well, you know, these, lots of the grants, you learn to have the grants, but that's an advantage of an ESC and Jan Hall, who's told us numerous times, you know, they're big on this grant life and they go after monies that are out there. So, with ESCs, they, they can acquire grant monies to do all kinds of things, professional developments, that, all these kind of things, you know, we've seen, we've seen now. Uh, but so those are kind of some of the advantages to that. But, uh, you know, I, once again, I've just more than, I'm just giving you these, you can look through it. Now, this ESC is kind of, if you read through it, it identifies who must be on this. You know, like now, right now in the RESE, you got to have a board member, you got to have a superintendent, you got to, well, this goes through the same thing, you got to have somebody from all those categories, you got to have a teacher or a principal and, you know, it kind of, who the governing board is. How the, the major difference between the RESE and the ESC, among other things, is that an ESC is autonomous of the state board of education. Right now, everything that we do at RESE, the state board has to okay. Now, twenty years ago, it wasn't like that, was it? You know, RESSAs were independent, they ran their own business, their board of directors did things, hired people, whatever they did, they did themselves. Now, it has to go to the state board, they have to say, you know, essentially what you're doing is recommend to the state board to do something. Then if they allow you to do it, you can do it. Well, ESCs are not like that. The state board of education has no authority over you whatsoever. You are your own entity, you do what you want to do, they can't control you in any way in doing your own thing. So, that's another one of the advantages. So, anyway, for the most part, I just want to share these three with you because you're going to hear about these three depending. And with the idea that eventually, we're going to have to make a decision what we're going to do and we're going to have to see if we choose to go in that direction, if the advantages outweigh the disadvantages and the cost savings and all that are advantageous. What counties are going to be participating too? Like Mr. Minkin's one, we're working on that, just a lot with others, we've talked to people. But, uh, like I say, some people are not talking about this at all, some boards, some know exactly what they want to do, one way or the other. But that's kind of where we are on that.
How much time do they anticipate voting for this meeting?
I had, I really don't know very closely, they have maybe, again, I'm just speculating.
I would hope, I'm just going to say, and I hope, rather than having some of the other chunk that they have, a lot of time will be devoted to this because this is important.
Correct.
And, and I have another question, I don't know whether, uh, you discussed this in your meetings or not, but if a county decide, you, you mentioned something just a moment ago, the county could come in the middle of the year.
Yeah, I think your ESC could.
Okay. Once they come in, they, we would be required to sign, uh, an agreement that they would stay in, in the cooperative for a given period of time and not be allowed to drop out at any, since they could come in at any time.
Well.
I would hope, I would hope that we wouldn't have a pulling out because that could be a total disaster.
Well, that's another thing, reason, I think Dr. O'Call has said, this decision about being in one is you made, well, it's assumed November or so, because these entrepreneurial agencies, what this is, like they're all across the country, they develop their own bylaws and requirements and things like that, I think would be built into that. So, that, that means that either Leslie Tyree or any attorneys will be writing their belt and these agreements will put components of it such as that. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that if that's, if your ESC wanted to say, you know, you're committed or not committed or whatever they decided to do, that would be in the initial bylaws of that. But these are not, we're trudging new ground here, so we really don't know.
Lincoln County can't afford not to be a part of this.
Now, I don't, I don't think it's any mystery how, how we as a board are going to want to proceed, it's going to be cooperative agreements versus ESCs.
Well, it's, once again, yeah, who is going to be participating with us? Oh, you know, we don't know.
Don't know.
That's the thing, because the more the mayor, this cooperative person, we save a lot of money, don't we?
Well, but, I mean, didn't our RESE do a better job than most of the other RESSAs? So, doesn't stand to reason that our ESC, assuming we keep a lot of the key personnel that were in our RESE, that our ESC will be staffed by people who were very good at what they did and other counties would want to be a part of our RESE that maybe didn't have that opportunity before. So, I, I know you mentioned that, that certain counties that were in our RESE before may not be looking at joining an ESC, but I'm betting that those counties that have crunched the numbers like we have and have looked at the real benefit would, would love to jump into, I, I, I'm more concerned with us getting kicked out of our ESC because we're such a small player by these big fish that want to come in. I mean, I, I, that's a, it's a night. And I, I think we're going to be a hot, our ESC, if it keeps our former RESE people, it's going to be a hot commodity. Because our people knew what they were doing, they helped us a major way.
See, what's happening right now is statewide, RESE personnel are mailing right and left. Those thing, you know, there's no job security. Come July, I don't have a job anymore, so, you know, Jan is facing that problem in, in our RESE right now, you know, she's had, I think she told me up there, three of her people, you know, they've resigned. Uh, and, you know, do you want to take a job in RESE when you, it doesn't, it's not going to exist next year? So, that's going to be a problem, but you're right, we think we have a, one of the better RESSAs in the state and I think most people would agree with that. Uh, it's been that way and it continues to be.
And, and wouldn't it stand to re, state quicker, the counties that want to participate in our ESC are on board and committed financially, the more chance we have of retaining, basically, an impact but reshaping and renaming RESE?
Absolutely, it goes on. And then that way, when they're recruiting personnel in these different categories and some of the things, if you look and see what we offer and what we save money on, then they can see, you know, we're going to be here.
The promise of job security, these people that don't want to get out of a job, come make, and make their income.
Well, many of them are. And we, last year, we had on here computer, I mean, there's so many of these things, computer repair, Medicaid, audiology, food service, legal service, those are the things we save, say, we save, that's not the only areas we save money on. We did that for a while, well, cooperative pocket person, things like, we're not even cited here, this was just a minimal savings. But you're right, uh, we think we're attractive. And once again, I can't overemphasize this legal thing. These people, you know, they know what they're paying, these, uh, legal people, you know, the other counties are and, uh, you know, they, they see, you know, the advantage that Jan, they contact them all the time. And see, when they were talking about this before the abolishment of RESE became valid, they were talking in terms of, I said, wait a minute now, you know, Leslie can only do so much work here. And, you know, they'll, and Leslie said, listen, one county will be taken care of. And, but their idea, if we get more counties that want to participate, we'll hire some more, you know, we'll hire somebody up in some other county and they'll work for our co-op, they'll work for our, uh, ESC.
I mean, you, you can teach a bright law school graduate to practice law in a very, you know, I, I know you all think that school law is very broad and very complicated and it is compared to a lot of areas of law, but if you focus your time just on that, you can, you can teach a, you know, a, I want to say, a bright law school graduate to effectively practice in that area only with two to eight, regular two to eight, six months to a year.
Leslie would be the supervisor of such a person or persons and they would, you know, she would assign them and all those kinds of things and she would be the one that did it. That's one of the advantages of the ESC. Who is going, if you have a cooperative agreement and there's several counties in it, not an ESC, but a cooperative agreement, who gets the services? You know, who, who do we?
Don't have the bargaining power.
Well, who, you know, you got three counties here, well, you got a particular service, where do they go tomorrow? Who decides this? You know, and with an ESC, you've got somebody there that's the administrator and they make those decisions for you. Now, the, there's another side of that, of course, you got an ESC, you got to have a place, you know, you got to have a building and a place to be in, where with the cooperative agreements, you don't. So, you know, that's, once again, you want to see the pros and cons of, of that whole thing, but, you know, we'll see how it pans out. But I think what areas, same truth, we have to be able to do this and this, Dr. O'Call, that's what he thinks too. You got to be able to make these decisions for this education so that you have, you rely on yourself enough time to develop your bylaws and know, know the legalities of how these things work. So, you'll be able to recruit people, see what they're going to offer, start seeking grants and all those things by next July, otherwise, you know, these, a lot of them are like closing the doors, aren't they, and they're getting rid of their inventory and everything else?
Three, I know there's perfect, it's all, you know, RESE.
See, three, that's Canal, Platteville, Clay and Boone. I mean, I've had breakfast with the president of Canal County, he told me prior to Sunday, he goes, I'm not, we're not going to do that. I said, well, I'm not surprised, I didn't think you would. I said, but I hope we do because I think we need to. You see, they can, they have the resources. He told me, he goes, we, he goes, we're just providing a place for these counties to store all their stuff and we ship it out. Because we don't need them, we've got our own place and we, you know, they have all their supplies at another location, Canal County, they're big enough and they do that anyway, they don't need this. So, that, you know, that makes sense, but not everybody's in that position.
Well, of course, I'm, I'm sorry for going over. The more jointers, the less it costs us too. I mean, if there're only two in it, then we probably can't afford it.
Well, we wouldn't have, certainly have a very big staff.
Well, it'd be highly, go ahead. Would it be highly to our advantage to have Campbell County involved in this because they have a lot of extra space?
Absolutely, but.
Because I know there's no guarantee.
Right. That's one of the questions that Jeff and I asked ourselves, will Campbell County participate? Especially since there's a bit of change, not anything, it's, it's actually, but Mr. Smith, Bill Smith, we, you know, he was there for years and years, we knew him and, you know, we kind of, you know, Bill was going to, he, he was kind of part of the group, I mean, he was, you know, he was part of RESE two and, you know, you never thought that he was going to, you know, abandon his fellow counties. Uh, and now, you know, they, they have a new administration and all, not, once again, saying they won't feel the same way, but we don't know. And, uh, and plus, you know, we don't know how their board feels down there either, you know, Mr. Sax reports to his board and they, they want to do it, they may, I don't know what they want. And there's a couple of other counties that we wonder about that are, that are in our RESE. But now, there's two that I spoke to up there that told me that they were going to stay in RESE. So, there's three, I think, that are leaning that way, three, we don't know. Okay. Does that, I have anything else? That's all.
I'm going to take five minutes, Brad.
See, I told you if you had to go to the bathroom.
Good, I.
Yeah.
I just got up, I'm tired.
You didn't ask, did you?